Good afternoon. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices and would everyone please stand for a moment of silence and a pledge to the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The deputy clerk please do roll call.
Amo.
Here.
Agnastakis.
Present.
Benelli.
Here.
Breschek.
Here.
Cheney.
Here.
Fagion.
Here.
Hines.
Here.
Kulasek.
Here.
Luhann.
Here.
Menuda.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Paduk.
Here.
Bruskevich.
Here.
Sassy.
Here.
Sierra.
Here.
Steganga.
Here.
Sutherland.
Here.
Tortel.
Here.
Tui.
Here.
Vero. 20 eyes, one absent, Madam Chair.
Ladies and gentlemen, your first order of business today is to elect a chairman for the year 2019. I will now accept nominations. legislator Fagion.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to place in nomination the name L. Stephen Breschek as Chairman of the Orange County Legislature. Mr. Breschek has led this chamber for the past five years with professionalism, honesty, and focus. For a young man, he brings a wealth of governmental knowledge to the table. Steve Breschek has been the mayor of the Village of Montgomery since 1990. For clarity, I was still in high school. And legislator Lujan, well, he was only three years old. Steve Breschek was elected to the Orange County Legislature in 1994. He has served on each of our eight statutory committees. He has been or was named Chairman of at least four of those committees. Steve is hardworking and very much involved in his community and our county. His resume speaks to itself for this. Member, volunteer, committee man, an author, yes, even an author. Well, maybe not an author, but a co-author. Steve has dedicated so much of his time to his community and to our county. Steve Breschek has been out in front, leading, on issues and topics that matter here in Orange County. His leadership spans across the aisle and focuses on results. It is for all these reasons that I place in nomination the name L. Stephen Breschek as Chairman of the Orange County Legislature. Thank you.
Clerk.
Do I have a second? I'm sorry, Mr. Tui.
I am honored to second the nomination of L. Stephen Breschek as Chairman of the Orange County Legislature for 2019. Legislator Breschek's compassion, openness, and integrity are ever-present, and his willingness to share his vast knowledge, I came to know firsthand as a freshman legislator with my many, many questions and concerns, and his door was always open. Therefore, once again, I second the nomination of L. Stephen Breschek for Chairman of the Orange County Legislature.
Thank you. The name of L. Stephen Breschek has been presented as Chairman for the year 2019. Are there any other nominations? legislator Paduk.
This is not another nomination, but in the spirit of bipartisanship, we, the Democratic Caucus, support the nomination of L. Stephen Breschek as Chairman of the Orange County Legislature. The Democratic Caucus has played a vital role in Orange County government and hopes to continue that role in 2019. Our diverse caucus has a lot to offer, and I hope that the chairperson will represent fairness, bipartisanship, and respect. The chairman has the responsibility to make appointments with fairness and inclusion, and I hope that the chairman understands the importance of working together to bring out the best this legislature can be. And with that, I would like to support the nomination of L. Stephen Breschek for Chairman of the Legislature for 2019.
There being no other nominations, may I have a motion to close nominations? Thank you. I now cast a ballot for L. Stephen Breschek as Chairman of the Orange County Legislature. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? L. Stephen Breschek has been elected as Chairman of the Orange County Legislature for the year 2019. legislator O'Donnell.
Thank you. It's my honor to nominate legislator Catherine Benelli as the Majority Leader of this legislature for the year 2019. Katie did a great job for us in 2018. She is open-minded, works well across the aisle with both the Democratic and Independent Party. First and foremost, though, she leads with integrity and always keeps the public first. Katie is an outstanding public servant. Her years as a member of the town of Blooming Grove Town Board and then as the town supervisor prepared her and has served her well as her job as a county legislator. She's been outstanding in that position and has been Chair of numerous committees. Last year, she was recognized by our caucus and elected to be our leader. She is an avid and alert listener. She gets all the information and is decisive in making her decisions, evaluating all the facts, and as I stated earlier, always keeping the public first. I therefore nominate Catherine Benelli as Majority Leader.
Thank you, legislator O'Donnell. legislator Kulasek.
Thank you. I'm proud to announce that the Democratic Caucus has unanimously endorsed Michael Paduk to be our Minority Leader 2019. Mr. Paduk exhibits his knowledge on the issues and has demonstrated his ability to work with others. He's not afraid to stand up for our caucus on issues that matter most to the people of Orange County. We look forward to addressing budget concerns, environmental issues, public safety issues, and all other issues that improve the quality of life in Orange County. Mr. Paduk is proud of our diverse caucus and looks forward to working together to accomplish our goals. Congratulations, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you, legislator Kulasek. legislator Agnastakis.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It is my honor to state that the Independence Party Caucus has unanimously nominated Michael Amo to be Party Leader. Throughout the years, it almost seemed that Mr. Amo was standing alone fighting for the principles of the Independence Party, but I could tell you that I've never seen the kind of growth in a caucus that he's achieved. So it is my honor to nominate him as Party Leader.
Thank you, legislator Agnastakis. Would Steve's sister Stacy come to the front of the auditorium? And Steve will be given the oath by County Clerk Annie Rabbit.
State your name.
Aye. L. Stephen Breschek.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
Due to the office of.
Due to the office of Chairman of the Legislature.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me guide.
So help me guide. Thank you.
Now, would Annie Rabbit please present Chairman with his 25-year pin?
So today is a big day for our chairman. 25 years serving the public in so many different capacities. He's joined here with his family, his colleagues from the village that he serves as mayor. It's my great honor to stand here and serve you with a pin. For 25 years of service, we're very proud of you and continue to do it. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you.
Annie, would you like to administer the oath of office to Judge Anafree and Sheriff Porte? You can move.
Thank you very much. Before we do, Annie does the swearing-in of the sheriff and Judge Anafree, just wanted to say a few words. I don't have a planned speech. Thank you to my colleagues. Thank you, legislator Fagion and legislator Tui for making the nomination in the second. You made me sound a lot better than I probably am, but thank you. It's a pleasure to serve you once again for the year 2019 coming up. We have an aggressive agenda. We have a great working relationship with the legislature and my office and the county exec's office and so many other agencies and commissions throughout the county. I've had a good working relationship with Mike Paduk, Minority Leader Paduk, and Party Leader Amo over the years for well over two decades, and Majority Leader Benelli for over two decades, too, back to her days when she was Supervisor of the town of Blooming Grove. We have a lot of great ideas here, and as you well know, I have an open door, excuse me, an open-door policy. I'm always welcome new ideas. Sometimes I get a little hot-headed, but not too often, not too often. Kevin's smirking over there, and he was laughing when somebody said "young" too, but looking over at him. He's not far behind, only think about five years. But I thank my sister for bringing the Bible up and being here today, Joan Christiano, my girlfriend, Deputy Mayor Joanne Shields. We go back 32 years on the village board, since I was a trustee in '87, so that's a long time, not just the 29th as mayor, but three years as a village trustee as well, and Darlene Indulsek who's a village trustee. So thank you for coming here today, and thank you for voting for me for another year. You know, we have a lot coming up. Rob has done a great job with the opioid committee, starting that and engaging a lot of different agencies and getting awareness out there for the opioid epidemic. But we have a lot of things to do in the next year. Infrastructure, bridges, roads, Heritage Trail, hopefully getting Camp LaGuardia sold or partially sold and back on the tax rolls. Lot of big business coming to Orange County, million-square-foot warehouses, lot of jobs, lot of good things going on. Hopefully, we can do something with the three buildings in Newburgh, finally, whether the foundation does it or we do it. There's so many issues confronting the county of Orange, and we're going to hit them head-on. So, thank you again, and it's a different thing we're going to do today. We're going to swear in the sheriff, Annie is, as well as Judge Anafree, the Orange County Sheriff. Can't say enough about him. He's got one of the most accredited agencies in the state of New York, and you will be the longest-tenured sheriff in the history of Orange County, correct, Sheriff? Yeah, does a superb job over there. We enjoy quite a bit of money from the ICE inmates that has to be housed somewhere, whether it's Orange County or it's going to be, they're going to be housed somewhere in the United States. So he has a professional agency, and I invite Annie up to do his, are we going to do your swearing-in first or Judge Anafree's?
We're doing it at the same time, I think.
Do it the same time? Okay.
If I always follow the sheriff.
You always follow the sheriff. And Judge Anafree, too, a man of distinction who served the county well for many years, just a professional, approachable individual from the western end of the county. And unfortunately, he's going to be leaving us in the not-too-distant future. We wish we could keep him for another 20 years, but I congratulate both of you gentlemen.
I, Carl D. DuBois. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And I will faithfully discharge. I will faithfully discharge. The duties office of. The duties and office of Sheriff of Orange County. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. So help me guide. So help me guide. Thank you.
With the sheriff is his lovely wife Barbara, his son Austin, and your grandson's name again?
Colton.
Colton, okay, I better get that straight. Like Newburgh. Congratulations. Kevin, did you want to say a couple words about the sheriff, or did I say enough? Okay, we'll finish up with Judge Anafree.
I just really want to, you know, thank my family for coming here today and obviously for all the support they've had for the last 16 years. And obviously, the office would not have those, would not have those accreditation if it wasn't for my staff right here, and I wish everybody, give them a round of applause. An agency with over 400 employees is not really easy to run. It really isn't unless you have a great staff around you. I don't take any of the credit unless I share that credit with my staff. And again, we've done very well over the last 16 years. We brought the sheriff's office to the 21st century. And, you know, four more years, there's still a lot of work to do. We have a lot of challenges in Orange County. You know, my partners in government with District Attorney, the county clerk, and county executive, where the governor is, with Steve, and, you know, without partners of these other three elected officials and obviously the county legislature, we really, it all comes together and facilitates the operation of the sheriff's office. And just one other thing is, Steve, good luck, and Steve is going to go, is being deployed next week, and I couldn't, I couldn't speak to the public without recognizing your service, and thank you.
Thank you.
Annie, before we go, Chairman Hines, you wanted to say a couple, Annie, just one second. Chairman Hines is just going to say one thing.
Sure. I have been on the Public Safety Committee in the county here for nine years. I've chaired it for the last seven, so I've worked very closely with Sheriff DuBois and his command staff. And I think when you surround yourself with good people, it makes you look even better, and the command staff at the sheriff's office has just been fantastic. The county was, the whole country was hit with school safety issues, and the sheriff and his staff jumped right on it and put armed sheriffs in the schools, any school district that wanted it, they supported that program. Just last month, we honored a deputy that made a lifesaving effort on behalf of a student who was hired by the sheriff's office as a school safety officer, although wasn't working in that capacity when he made that rescue. I also am proud of the sheriff because he always thinks outside of the jail or outside of the box, if you will. He partnered with the Homeland Security and made, our shooting range is going to be expanded with federal dollars and federal efforts, and our local police agencies are going to be able to use that range. We've made it part of our partnership with the state of New York as well, where the governor is going to hopefully give us some shared services money. So it's another way of generating revenue, even outside the jail. And without that generated revenue, we'd be in a lot different position. So the sheriff has always done a great job with respect to that as well. It's not only a police agency, a public service agency, and a public safety agency, but it's also been a revenue generator for the county of Orange, which you don't hear a lot of counties able to say that because they just don't have that innovative thinking that we see in Sheriff DuBois with his leadership. And in closing, I'd just like to say congratulations on your reelection, overwhelmingly reelected, because the public respects what you do and how you do it, how your agency does it, certainly keeping the public safe. They work closely with the fire departments, various training, safety. So all around, just a fantastic job. We're proud to have you for another four years as our sheriff, and congratulations. And Judge Anafree, I know you're going to, I don't want to say age out because it sounds terrible, but the rules in the state have to change for people like you. Judge Anafree has been called upon to work throughout the state, not only here in Orange County, and they give him all these difficult cases that nobody else wants to handle because he's so well-rounded in his experience. So we're happy to have you as well for as long as the state allows us to. So we're proud to have you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Hines.
State your name. Aye.
I, Robert A. Anafree.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
Due to the office of.
Orange County Surrogate Judge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me guide.
So help me guide.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Just a few brief comments. I can't believe it's been 10 years. It's gone by really fast. I want to say it has been an absolute honor and privilege to serve the people of Orange County during the past 10 years. And as Kevin referenced, everyone knows that when you turn 70, your brain turns to mush. So after a year, I will be leaving, even though reelected, but it has been a tremendous honor. If anyone would have told me at the beginning of my term that I'd be serving as acting Supreme Court Justice in addition to surrogate judge, an acting surrogate for Westchester County and acting Supreme Court Justice for Nassau County to special assignment, I would have said, "You're crazy." But it has been an absolute pleasure, and I want to thank everyone for their support. I particularly want to thank my staff at the surrogate court. I have a wonderful staff. I'm going to single out my chief clerk, Amy Miller, my deputy clerk, Chen Wadu. I don't think you appreciate the volume we do. We do between 4,000 and 5,000 cases a year just in the surrogate court, another 1,000 in the Supreme, the acting Supreme Court, and the trial court. And it doesn't happen alone. I have a wonderful staff. They are the hardest-working staff anyone could ask for, and it's been, and it's been an absolute privilege. And I also want to thank my high school sweetheart, my bride of 46 years, for allowing me to run again for the, for the extra year. It's been, it's been a great privilege. Thank you very much.
Congratulations again, Judge Anafree, and you'll never age out. You look younger than me, for God's sakes. This group up here gave me a lot of gray hairs in the last few years. Not you, ladies, these guys. Okay, we ready for, you want tenants first or you already got that? Okay. Okay, we'll start with number one.
legislator Benelli, resolution adopting the Legislative Manual for the county of Orange and the Rules of Order and Procedure for the Orange County Legislature as previously amended pursuant to Section 2.02A of the Orange County Charter, Section 153 of the county law, and Article 2C1E, Article 3, introduction, and Article 4E1A and B of the said Legislative Manual.
Discussion? Yes. Majority Leader Amo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly will support this. I think it's a great idea, but I, Mr. Fagion and I have had this conversation. I think it's about time that, I know she's been to the council, it's about time that we take a thorough look at the Administrative Legislative Manual and the committee and really try to find out where the changes need to be made to affect any changes we have in law, practice of the county and state. I hope that, I hope that that becomes a priority for Mr. Fagion. He's chairman.
I'm sure it will be. We've done that periodically, way back to when you were Rules Chairman, when I was Rules Chairman, Katie, and so on and so forth, and we're always open to that throughout the year. Okay, I was remiss in not acknowledging the county exec who's here, too, and we wish him Godspeed when he has to go abroad, and also the district attorney was here, David Hoofler, as well, so. Oh, probation director, I'm sorry, Derek. Good to see you.
Sorry, did I interrupt?
No, no, we were recognizing you.
Thank you very much.
And Deputy County Exec.
Congratulations to you for getting the Lieutenant Chairman again for the caucus here as a Democratic Party and a Republican Party in the red department. Congratulations to you all. Been enjoying working with you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Derek Miller. And Deputy County Exec Harry Pore is here as well. Okay, we're on to number two. Roll call. First.
Benelli. Yes. Paduk.
Yes.
Amo.
Yes.
Agnastakis. Cheney. Fagion. Hines. Kulasek. Luhann. Menuda. O'Donnell. Bruskevich. Sassy. Sierra. Steganga. Sutherland. Tortel. Tui. Vero. Breschek. 20 present, one absent.
Number two.
legislator Benelli, resolution establishing legislative calendar for 2019 pursuant to Article 2C1F of the Legislative Manual.
Majority Leader Benelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would like to make an amendment to this particular resolution, and the amendment would be to change the March 7, 2019 meeting to 7:00 PM. And in addition to that, change the July 2, 2019 meeting to 3:30 PM.
Second. Discussion? Yes. legislator Luhann.
I'd like to make an amendment at this time for May 2, 2019, 3:30 PM to 7:00 PM.
In addition to the other, we're only voting on one separate to that. Okay, we'll do one amendment at a time. Yeah, okay, if there's no objections, we'll take a roll call on legislator, Majority Leader Benelli's motion. Yes, John Vero. Okay, roll call. We can go to your amendment after we vote on this one. Okay. Okay, roll call.
Benelli.
Yes.
Paduk.
Yes.
Amo.
Yes.
Agnastakis. Cheney. Fagion. Hines. Kulasek. Luhann.
Aye.
Menuda. O'Donnell. Bruskevich. Sassy. Sierra. Steganga. Sutherland. Tortel. Tui. Vero. Breschek. 20 eyes.
Motion carries. Okay, and the legislator Luhann is making a motion to change the May 2 meeting from 3:30 to 7:00 PM, correct? And we add a second to that? Okay, second by Minority Leader Paduk. Discussion? Yes.
In regards to the calendar, I did talk with the chairman about this. We were hoping to get quarterly nightly meetings. I guess the Republican Caucus is set against that. We had three last year. We're cutting it down to two this year. I think the quarterly meetings would allow greater participation in, by the public, and it's, I think it's unfortunate that we're cutting out meetings rather than adding. Thank you.
Further discussion? legislator Agnastakis and legislator Tortel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While I certainly understand my Democratic colleague's interest in making it a 7:00 meeting, I think we've had these discussions year after year over the last eight years, and I think we've looked at the record, and people don't turn out anymore at nighttime than they do in the daytime. It always seems that turnout is 100% correlated to topics on the agenda or hot topic issues within the community. Making a night session would also inconvenience some people that have difficulty with night travel, and I think it also potentially increases overtime pay for those reasons. Unfortunately, Mr. Paduk, I will be against it.
legislator Tortel.
Yes, well, I respect what legislator Agnastakis has said in the attendance record, that attendance is driven by topic and by what's going on within the communities. I also think it would be more fair to hold more meetings at night, like legislator Duke had said, about it being able for the public who work, generally work, to have that choice of whether they can be here or not, or whether they have to take off of work to attend one of our meetings. So I support having a quarterly evening meeting throughout our calendar. Thank you.
Okay, Majority Leader Benelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to reaffirm what has been previously said, and, you know, we have this discussion every reorganization meeting, and time and time again, yes, there were three night meetings last year, but if you look at those meetings, they were very poorly attended. In fact, they were probably one of the worst-attended meetings. I think a consideration, and Mr. Agnastakis did point it out, as far as staff needing to attend those meetings, to whether they have, a department head has something on our agenda or not, it is helpful to have them here, and that's why we do most of the meetings during the day. It is, we can accommodate, and our meetings are now on the website. They have been for a while. They are, well, they're not televised live. They are definitely, you can pull up any one of the videos on our website, see all of that, so everybody knows what's going on. So Republican Caucus in discussion decided that the two meetings would suffice for the issue, and we'll see how it goes.
legislator Luhann.
Making a night session would also inconvenience some people that have difficulty with night travel. And I think it also potentially increases overtime pay for those reasons. Unfortunately, Mr. Paduk, I will be against it.
Legislature Tortel.
Yes, well, I respect what legislator Agnustakis has said in the attendance record, that attendance is driven by topic and by what's going on within the communities. I also think it would be more fair to hold more meetings at night, like legislator Paduk had said about it being able for the public who work, generally work, to have that choice of whether they can be here or not, or whether they have to take off of work to attend one of our meetings. So I support having a quarterly evening meeting throughout our calendar. Thank you.
Okay, Majority Leader Benelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to reaffirm what has been previously said. And we have this discussion every reorganization meeting. And time and time again, yes, there were three night meetings last year. But if you look at those meetings, they were very poorly attended. In fact, they were probably one of the worst-attended meetings. I think a consideration, and Mr. Agnustakis did point it out, as far as staff needing to attend those meetings, to whether they have, a department head has something on our agenda or not, it is helpful to have them here. And that's why we do most of the meetings during the day. It is, we can accommodate, and our meetings are now on the website. They have been for a while. They are, well, they're not televised live. They are definitely, you can pull up any one of the videos on our website, see all of that, so everybody knows what's going on. So Republican caucus in discussion decided that the two meetings would suffice for the issue. And we'll see how it goes.
Legislature Luhan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, very fruitful in the conversation about whether or not, you know, what's, what's better and what has been reported as most statistically sound. But the truth is, is that most city council meetings are around 7:00. Some people do attend them, some people don't. The point is, as a legislature, as elected officials, we should make ourselves as accommodating as possible. The reality is that most people are working at 3:30 to 5:00 PM. If we are opening at 7:00, at least it opens the possibility that people do choose to be there on that particular meeting that they can. And it is our responsibility as elected officials to make that as much of a possibility as we can. So respectfully, I agree, you know, unfortunately, that has been the case. But we should, you know, think about, you know, the possibility that people might show up more often if we did more late meetings and if this was something that was more of a consistency. So, thank you.
Legislature Riskevich.
Yeah, legislator Luhan brings up a good point. A lot of city council meetings and town board meetings happen in the evening. And I know many of us as legislators like to attend those meetings and be accessible to our towns and constituents there. So that having more of our meetings in the evening makes it harder for us to attend those meetings. So I would be in favor of fewer. Thank you.
You took the words right out of my mouth. I've heard this argument over the years on both sides. Originally, we, when I first came in and Rob was here, we had zero night meetings. And then we upped it to, I think, four at one point at a high level, and then three. But, you know, if we have them at the same time at night as villages, towns, and cities, those elected officials aren't going to be able to come here, and we're not going to be able to go there. There are many legislators that like to go to those meetings. And I just think we're going to worsen the situation. So, you know, I think two is fair, reasonable. It's somewhat of a compromise. Party leader, Emo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree with you in, in point, I think the number that we're looking at is fair. I think also to follow this Tortel, Tortel's point, and that people are working, remember, and I don't have the data specifically, but remember, we allow the public to speak at the end of every one of our meetings. And I suspect if we look at the time that those happen, we're probably fine if they're after 5:00 at night. If people wanted to come and speak to us and address questions, they have the right to show up from work and come here. So we do have the opportunity. It's not closing the door totally.
That's a good point. And usually the sign-up is ahead of the meeting. Do we allow sign-up at the end of a meeting for, for non-agenda items at the end? We do allow sign-ups after?
No.
No, we don't?
No, no, no. Sign-up at the end.
Okay, so in line with what party leader Emo said, maybe we can loosen that for the people that want to come and speak at the end of the meeting. If they feel they're going to get here...
It's on the legislative manual. Take care of that next year.
Yep, next year. This year. This year.
This year.
That's right. Okay, roll call. Point, right, yes, no. Yes, vote would be to agree with legislator Luhan, and a no vote would be not to agree, correct?
Correct. Benelli?
No.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
No.
Agnustakis?
No.
Chini?
No.
Fagion?
No.
Heinz?
No.
Kulasek?
Yes.
Luhan?
Aye.
Menuda?
No.
O'Donnell?
No.
Riskevich?
No.
Sassi?
No.
Sierra?
Aye.
Stiganga?
No.
Sutherland?
No.
Tortel?
Aye.
Tui?
No.
Vero?
No.
Breschek?
No.
5 ayes, 15 noes, motion fails.
Okay, number three.
As amended.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Resolution as amended with the one passing.
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Agnustakis?
Chini?
Yes.
Fagion?
Heinz?
Kulasek?
No.
Luhan?
Aye.
Menuda?
No.
O'Donnell?
No.
Riskevich?
No.
Sassi?
No.
Sierra?
Aye.
Stiganga?
No.
Sutherland?
No.
Tortel?
Aye.
Tui?
No.
Vero?
No.
Breschek?
No.
5 ayes, 15 noes, motion fails.
Okay, number three.
As amended.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Resolution as amended with the one passing.
Benelli?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Agnustakis?
Chini?
Yes.
Fagion?
Heinz?
Kulasek?
Yes.
Luhan?
Aye.
Menuda?
No.
O'Donnell?
No.
Riskevich?
No.
Sassi?
No.
Sierra?
Aye.
Stiganga?
No.
Sutherland?
No.
Tortel?
Aye.
Tui?
No.
Vero?
No.
Breschek?
No.
5 ayes, 15 noes, motion fails.
Okay, number three.
As amended.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Resolution as amended with the one passing.
Benelli?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Agnustakis?
Chini?
Yes.
Fagion?
Heinz?
Kulasek?
Yes.
Luhan?
Aye.
Menuda?
No.
O'Donnell?
No.
Riskevich?
Sassi?
No.
Sierra?
No.
Stiganga?
No.
Sutherland?
No.
Tortel?
Aye.
Tui?
No.
Vero?
No.
Breschek?
No.
20 ayes. Mr. Chairman, and the desk is clear.
Okay, before we adjourn, I just want to also acknowledge that we had the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Orange County Airport new runway, which is, makes it a lot safer for the airport and definitely the Village of Montgomery flight entrance and exit. And Majority Leader Benelli was there, Jim Kulasek was there, Airport Committee Chairman, John Vero was there, and who else am I missing? Peter Tui, of course. Freezing, it was freezing out there today, but we made it. It was a great accomplishment for the county of Orange, and most of the legislature voted for that improvement, mostly federally funded, by the way. Majority Leader Benelli, you want to say a few words?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank my fellow caucus members for the confidence they've placed to me again for the year 2019. And I'd like to particularly thank legislator O'Donnell, who's been a great friend, a great supporter, and thank you for the very kind words. I really appreciate it, Jimmy. And thank you to my fellow leaders, Mr. Paduk and Mr. Emo. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I look forward to continuing to work for all of the legislators in all of the issues that we have here facing Orange County. And we've done a great job in 2018, so 2019, I think we're off to a very good start. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. And see Carrie Anne or Kelly to sign the designations, correct? Right over here? Yes.
Would you mind your question? I have a question on one of your...
It is January 29th at what time?
4:45.
4:45. Okay.
We just have resolutions before the...
Town of Palm Tree?
For...
Town of Palm Tree. Okay, minority leader Paduk?
Yeah, I also would like to thank the members of the Democratic Caucus for their support this year. It's kind of tough when you only have five members working against a group of six, 15 plus one, sorry, Michael. But we do have a lot of great initiatives planned for this year. We have a lot of, very diverse caucus, and we're looking forward to working with you all, hoping that, you know, we can make some progress this year that benefits the people of Orange County. So thank you, Mr. Kulasek, for nominating me and for my caucus, for their support.
Thank you. Yes, legislature Agnustakis.
Actually, I just signed a document. Am I, or am I not being a Republican caucus, even on a Republican?
Well, you're still a Republican, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie.
All right. Bye. Bye. Thank you. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie.
Bye. Bye. Thank you. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie.
Bye. Bye. Thank you. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie.
Bye. Bye. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.